I will be there but not at 6:00 to 8:00 in the morning.
If you will please stand and join me to pledge allegiance and main standing to the indication.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Ross, would you like to give the address?
Dear Lord, thank you for this beautiful day in Canton, Georgia. Thank you for the love and warmth of our family and peace. Keep them ever in your thoughts and care and we pray that we do good work here tonight. Look at all the sides of an issue and make the best decision for the city of Canton. In your name, amen.
Amen. Thank you. I'd like to welcome our guest in district here tonight. We do have a couple of proclamations that we'd like to present. The first one is for the lupus awareness month. Is Kim, Kim here? I'm going to read a portion of this. Basically, May is lupus awareness month. Whereas lupus is an acute and chronic lifelong autoimmune disease in which the immune system is unbalanced, causing inflammation and tissue damage to virtually every organ in the body. No organ is spared. The disease can cause seizures, strokes, heart attacks, miscarriages, and organ failure. And whereas while lupus strikes mostly women of childbearing age, no one is safe from lupus as it also affects men and children. An estimated 1.5 million Americans have lupus and approximately 55,000 Georgians are living with lupus. And whereas lupus can be particularly difficult to diagnose because its symptoms are similar to those of many other diseases. And major gaps exist in the understanding the causes of lupus and more than half of all people with lupus take four or five, four or more years and visit three or more doctors before obtaining a correct diagnosis. And whereas there has been one new drug approved by the U.S. Food and Drug Administration specifically for lupus in the past 52 years. And current treatments for the disease can have damaging side effects. The city of Canton joins the Georgia chapter of the Lupus Foundation of America and other interested agencies and organizations in promoting awareness about lupus research and education. Therefore, IGH, Mayor of the City of Canton, hereby proclaim May as Lupus Awareness Month in Georgia and the city of Canton and acknowledge May 10th, 2015, as World Lupus Day, urging citizens to become knowledgeable about the impact of lupus on the human body, families, and the communities of Georgia. We have another proclamation. This is the proclamation for Poppy Day.
What day?
Poppy. You want poppy or don't you?
Puppy?
Not a puppy day, a poppy day. We have, we have some folks here. Come on up if you can come up here. We have Lynn Hollis, Charlie Buckley, and Ernie Chaplin. And I will read, this one is not very long so I'll read all of it. Skip some of the other. Okay, what we have here is whereas the poppy is as a memorial flower for the American war dead, is a tradition which began in the years following the First World War. And whereas veterans returning to their homes in this country after World War I remembered the wild poppies which lined the devastated battlefields in France and Flanders fields. And whereas the poppy is a symbol of hope for all veterans who served this great country through military service. And whereas the American Legion Auxiliary adopted the poppy as its memorial flower to pay tribute to the war dead and aid the living veterans and their families. Therefore, IGH, Mayor of the City of Canton, hereby proclaim the 23rd day of May, 2015, as Poppy Day and urge all citizens of the city of Canton to pay tribute to those who made the ultimate sacrifice in the name of freedom by wearing memorial poppy on this day. Where'd you get those photographers?
We were, Gene.
You were? Got it? Was it whole way?
Yeah, it was.
Okay, well, before we get on into our meeting, Mr. Ingram, our CFO has a introduction tonight.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I would like to take a moment to introduce the newest member of the Canton family and the newest employee for the citizens of Canton. She was a recipient of the president's list, dean's list, and a graduate cum laude of KSU in 2010 with a Bachelor of Arts in World History and Cultures and a certificate in Public History. Recipient on multiple scholarships to the University of Bath in England, where she received a master's in conservation of historic buildings and graduated with honors in December of 2013. She worked at supporting adoption and foster families in Cumming, Georgia from 2014 until recently, managing and coordinating parent-child visitation programs for families of domestic violence. She worked on two internships with Kennesaw Historic Preservation Commission that involved documenting historic structures in Cherokee Street Historic District, Big Shandy District, and Kent McDonald District. It's my pleasure and honor to introduce Ms. Michael Fowler as the Main Street Director. If you'll stand and be recognized.
Welcome to the seat. A pleasure to witness. Thank you. All right. On our next item on the agenda is consideration to approve the agenda. I would like to amend the agenda to include a discussion regarding wooded mountain trail and that will be item 8D under Old Business. And let's see, there's something else. I guess that was it, that's all. Anyone else have an amendment? Change to the current agenda? Motion to have a second. All the players signify by saying aye. All members voting for the motion. Okay. You also have in your agenda package there the minutes of the public hearing on May 7th as well as the council meeting minutes of May the 7th. Are there any corrections or changes to be made to those? Yes, sir.
On the minutes for the regular reading, item 8E, well, 8F is listed as E. So it should be changed to I F.
Am I looking at it right? Oh, I'm looking at it. Is that correct? It should be changed to I F instead of E.
Yeah, it was added on.
Okay. Got you. Any other corrections, changes? Mr. Ingram?
Are we going to talk about the meeting after the public hearing? Yes, on page two, Old Business A.
Are you in the minutes?
Yes, in the minutes.
Oh, okay.
The last line of A, Mr. Khalil has invested in lights.
Yes.
That should be 3,000. Should we add a decimal and two zeros?
Right, 3,000, right. Susan, you got that one? Okay. Any others? Thank you. Okay, if not, all here paying a motion to approve the minutes as am ended. Those in favor signify by saying aye. If so, all members voting for the motion, thank you. We now will have the 10-minute public input. We have two individuals here, Ben Key.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Ben Key. I'm here tonight to talk about sewer plans that my team submitted to the city for review on May the 1st. These plans propose to extend the sanitary sewer line from the easternmost manhole of the recently approved sewer extension plan that will serve the racetrack, Verizon store, and AT&amp;T store sites. So we're going to take, extend the lines, extend that plan eastern, east on the north side of Highway 20, just west of Weaver Circle. Our proposed sewer line will immediately serve a proposed mellow mushroom restaurant that's planned for the corner of Key Drive and Highway 20, as well as almost all of the remaining property within the city's utility service agreement that was a result of House Bill 489. Let me first give you a little history of the project and why I'm here tonight. We've been working for almost a year trying to obtain the necessary easements to install the sewer line on private property. Those attempts have continued to be unsuccessful. About three months ago, we met with the city engineer, city manager, and mayor to discuss the alternative using land within the DOT right-of-way since obtaining the easements on private property is impossible. The result of that meeting was that the city was fine with us using the right-of-way as long as it was okay with the DOT and that we would take into account the proposed widening project that the DOT has to take state route 20 from two lanes to four lanes. The result of our design, as submitted to the city on May 1st, does just that. We confirmed with the DOT that they are fine with the sewer being installed in their right-of-way and our plans show the latest design of their widening project. Our sewer line will fall north of both the existing pavement of Highway 20 as well as the proposed pavement when they widen to four lanes. This element of design essentially eliminates any chance of the city ever having to relocate this sewer line, which we were told was the main concern of the city. In fact, our line will be deep enough below the current road grade of 20 that even if the DOT decides in 30 years that they want to make it six lanes, sewer line is still deep enough to where it would never, would not need to be relocated by the city. To recap, we've designed these plans exactly how you guys have asked us to. We're not asking that the city participate in the cost of building this line. We're just simply asking to be provided with a sewer service that was guaranteed to us in the intergovernmental agreement that was resolved at House Bill 489. If you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer them. Take the tape and see the plans, you might can answer some questions much better than I can. But I just ask that you guys, please instruct the city engineer to reconsider our plans and hopefully we can move this project forward.
Sure.
You just said that the city engineer, I thought you said right at first that he agreed to what you were proposing and then right here at the end you said...
Well, that was the result of a meeting that we had about three months ago with the mayor, the manager, and the engineer. Where they said they would be fine with putting it in the right-of-way as long as DOT was okay with it and as long as we could take into account the widening project because the last thing the city wants to do is to have to relocate that line.
Of course.
And obviously, we don't want to disturb, we don't want to bust up any pavement, you know, install it in the first place.
So, so I didn't understand, try to understand. As it stands right now, the city engineer is saying no?
That's right. We submitted plans on May the 1st.
Did he give you a reason for saying no?
We checked the website about a week and a half after we submitted the plans and the only comment was sewer not to be inside the DOT right-of-way. I checked the website just before coming to this meeting and there were some additional comments. See here, in addition to sewer to be located outside of G dot right-of-way, it says the G UPS permit will be required for any work in the right-of-way. I'm not sure what G UPS means, Dave, to speak to that. I think it's a utility permit. I'm not positive on that. It says sewer manholes to be located no greater than 350 feet apart unless unavoidable. I think that's certainly something that we can talk about and probably, you know, add a manhole if that's what...
But if we don't know what the reason, do we know what the reason is?
We need to go back a little bit to that meeting you told me maybe three months ago. It was, the impression I got was not that it would just be designed on the road right-of-way. It was that we were told that there was at least one property owner that was basically going to not allow an easement to cross their property for a specific reason. And, you know, as far as our utility goes, we could not really allow that to happen if, for our utility system. I mean, you know, we can't just, one property owner can't hold up our system, you know, if you're running out of facts. And that, and what we talked about, if we had to, there's two alternatives there, you know, city could do them if we wanted to for our utility to get that easement. Or we could come out just along that property line and use the right-of-way in front of that property and still get by. I mean, that was the alternatives there. So then, I guess the next time I knew was that, I believe you had called or someone had called and said that they had denied the permit and that it was on, it's all on the right-of-way about 2,300 feet on the right-of-way. Now, the reason, the reason you don't really like to do it on the right-of-way is because if the DOT ever widens the road and forces you, which they can do, the risk is apparently very low, but they can force you to move it off of their right-of-way. I can assure you, Georgia Power does that fairly often because I've been there when they did it and I can assure you they'll make you move if it's only the right-of-way. If you're allowed to put it on the right-of-way, you gotta put, move it off. But, you know, that's, that's the thing. The question is, I guess, whether or not we wanted to run along the road right-of-way for that distance. And too, I mean, that's a pretty good cost savings to be able to do it on the right-of-way, I would think, as opposed to having to acquire, the developer to acquire easements all the way down Highway 20. So there's a savings there for them in addition to it being, quite honestly, easier to do, I guess, in the road right-of-way. But that's where we are. I had hoped that we could, we could deal with this at some, maybe a quick work session or something and really get into it so that everyone could try to understand what the benefits were or the pros and cons, I guess, of either way.
I think we all know what the quality of the mellow mushroom is. It would be a real, whether or not kept to have that business, put a location in our, in our city or in our geographical area. Sure, technically it's not there. It's my understanding that there is a time element involved here as to whether we're going to be able to take advantage of this. Could you address that, Mr. Key?
I'll let Mr. Hart explain to that. He's here from Mellow Mushroom. But I would like to address one of the concerns, I guess, about the cost. It would actually be cheaper to install the sewer line outside of the right-of-way. You have to, it's easy, you can avoid your guys' big 24-inch watering. That's cheaper to do, it's less designed. Basically, we have, we have all the easements with the exception of two property owners. And the cost of getting them to agree is essentially possible. They want us, they want us to go out and obtain deed restrictions for 18 other parcel owners that would benefit from the sewer line on our east that we just have no ability to do.
I still combat, I mean, have, have, have you contacted that property owner? I mean, have you done that and asked and just maybe he didn't get an answer or just got rejected outright?
The permit holder that you guys awarded the plan to for the first leg that serves the AT&amp;T, he was the one that was negotiating that. I have a letter that basically states the terms that they'll give it. It's, they were crafty enough to put some non-disclosure language in that offer to where the previous permittee asks that I not read it aloud or say it in a public session. I'll be happy to share that with you, you know, outside of a public forum that basically outlines what I've described. But they'll give us the easement if we can go out and obtain 18 deed restrictions for them.
Could you have the gentleman speak?
Yeah, he's on the list.
Oh, he's on the list? Oh, he's on the list, oh, okay. Okay.
Then, if you're in the easement for DOT, and took twenty years to get four lanes potentially, it's gonna take maybe fifty years to now to get six lanes, but would your sewer line be under the, one of the six lanes that occurred?
If that occurred, I would assume that it probably would be. All the construction of the widening of 20 from going from two lanes to four lanes is going on the south side, so the way those buildings are set up and parked a lot, if they ever decided to go six lanes, I imagine they probably would go on the north side. But the pipe is at a depth to where unless they lowered the road grades of Highway 20 significantly, which is really expensive, they should have did that before they built Canton Marketplace and it wouldn't be sitting down the whole. But, that's the only chance, is if they decided, they wanted to A, make it six lanes on the north side, and B, they decided they want to lower the entire road grade of Highway 20, that would be the only chance that we would, that the sewer line would need to be relocated.
They're never gonna be able to make six lanes with two lanes, one lane on each side. It's gonna have to be probably on the north side.
It's gonna be on the south side.
So, from going from two to four is all gonna go on the south side. If they went from four to six, my best guess is that it would be on the north side.
So, help me again, there's a, how many other pieces of property front 20 along that stretch?
It's quite a few, and, you know, we had a discussion with the engineer. If the city would like, then we can go around the property owners in the right-of-way that won't give us the easement, and then back on private property, but the best design practice is for your sewer line to be as straight as possible and not jog in and out.
But, that, that strip right there is a lot of my pieces of property to be developed commercially.
I don't want anyone arguing with that at all. Absolutely.
Absolutely. Well, it affects their project, but it's gonna affect all those other businesses along their future, potential businesses.
So, so, the question is, do we want it on the right-of-way? Do we care if it's on the right-of-way? Or do we want to mandate it be on the, off the right-of-way and not allow someone to hold it up?
But, I guess, this is something Mr. Dyer might need to address, is that can we, can we as a city go back and condemn something in order to be able to go across there? I mean, it's preventing us from developing or having commercial development along that strip, and they've got our, they've got our heads tied. What was the question?
Well, I mean, they have our heads tied as far as...
Which you didn't, you probably...
You can condemn property for a sewer easement.
Well, does that take a lot to do? Does that condemn the whole piece of property?
It doesn't necessarily put the sewer line in. It's just, you don't, you don't get right-of-way, you don't get the fee simply, you know, easement.
Permanent easement.
Permanent easement, plus a temporary easement for construction.
Is that difficult to do?
Legally, no. I mean, it's a simple legal process. You gotta pay for it.
Who would pay you?
Well, you would pay me, you know. You gotta pay the property owner. So that, you gotta pay the property owner the value of an easement.
Well, I don't think we're gonna solve this one, to be honest with you.
This is a process. This is a process.
Right. And, I'm not sure what the right process is.
Well, there's an appeal process if, if, if there's been a denial of a purpose, there's a process. It may come to the city council, I don't know.
If you could inform me of that process, the latest note, the last note on here that I found today was further review possible following resubmission. So, do you want another five hundred dollars to review another set of plans? Or can we...
I'm just learning about this stuff.
Yeah, no, I just, just looking for some direction. It's been three weeks and, you know, much longer, Mr. Hart's gonna go open his piece of joint somewhere else and...
It's not a joint.
He'll call a piece of joint.
Ken, what is the, what is the process for that? That was a question I asked a couple of times, is whether or not, I mean, is this a decision the engineer makes totally? Is that what our ordinance says? Or is this, is this something that is outside the parameters of our regulations? And, and if that's the case, then do they appeal directly to the council?
The Development Code does have allowance for an appeal of the decision of the city engineer, as well as the community development director, to the Board of Zoning Appeals. One thing that council needs to, if you will, understand is that the property that's being served and proposed is uncorporated, charitable county.
Yes.
But there is...
It's in our service delivery district, yes.
It's my understanding, yes, it's within the service delivery area. But, there is an appeals process to the decision by the community development director or the engineer to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Is that, is that our normal process that we gotta get on the agenda?
It is a process.
And it may be that the exact issue that we're dealing with is not one that would be appealed, but, because we're, we're talking about if our regulations don't address this issue right-of-way or not right-of-way, then that's not really a denial.
That would be an issue for City Council.
Right. The question y'all are talking about may not be an appeal to the Board of Zoning Appeals, which is really, or we're gonna require it to be in the right-of-way or not, if our regulations don't address it otherwise, so.
Well, you know, we, we, if we follow the, the normal process, and we put this on our work session, we would discuss it, and then it would be voted on at the next meeting, at the voting meeting. Now, I don't know how much time that is. The only other, the only other alternative would be is to call a special meeting at some point and discuss it and make a decision. And, you know, I'm not opposed to doing that, because, you know, that would expedite it somewhat. But now, do we have to do any particular advertising or anything like that, or something like this, that would take a certain amount of time?
I'm, I'm, I'm sure, I'm certain not. I'm, I need to get my head around exactly what's going on, and exactly what decision is being made before I can answer that question.
Let us, let us have, have a day or two to figure this out, for sure, and make sure...
And again, I'm just looking for some direction. I mean, we, we met with you guys and tried to do exactly what you wanted to do, and we're just trying to do the best we can to make everybody happy. And I know that, I've been to plenty of these meetings, and I've never heard of a sewer plan being discussed or voted on, so it's, if that's what y'all want to do, then, you know, we can certainly go that route. We just want to do what, what makes the most sense.
Yeah, okay. We'll, we'll give you a buzz, let you know exactly what the deal is.
Okay. Thanks for your time.
If it expedite, getting, helping us devise the process, then we need to go through it.
I mean, it's not gonna have to be dealt with sooner than later, I mean, sooner than others, so.
Sure.
It's on the whole, development, in the whole of areas.
Mr. Hart, come on up.
My name's Tom Hart. I'm not a resident of Canton. I live in Milton, Georgia. After thirty years with the Siemens Corporation, several months ago, I took an early retirement package and decided that I was gonna go out and try to find something else to do that might be a little bit more fun than selling automation equipment. So, I had a buddy that opened a Mellow Mushroom in the Canton Market, and visited him and talked to him, and kind of opened my eyes a bit, and signed on as a franchisee with the Mellow Mushroom Corporation. And, the market they'd given me to develop, that we kind of agreed that I would develop, was the Canton Market. And, that was over eighteen months ago that I started down the path. And initially started looking in the marketplace, and there's no leased space available. We looked at some of the property that might be available for purchase, and most of it was held and not being advertised as being for sale. And, there was one parcel that we looked at that ended up being the parcel, one of the parcels that's blocked in the sewer right now, that I was considering buying at that point in time. And, for a while, I was looking downtown here. Doug Flynn has a piece of property, it's the yellow-beige building on North Street that I was looking to develop that, and I brought the corporate bigwigs in to show them what I wanted to do. And it was their decision, not mine, that they just didn't feel the economic vibrance in downtown Canton to develop a restaurant there. And they didn't want me to be the catalyst to bring that vibrance, so that forced me out again. And so I've looked Riverstone, I've looked Reinhardt College Parkway, I've looked down to Sixes Road, and for one reason or another, I keep ending up back at the Canton Marketplace area. So, about a year ago, it was actually a year and a few months ago, when the deal fell through on the North Street property, Doug told me that his father owned a couple pieces of property that I would be interested in, introduced me, and sure enough, it looked to be a great piece of property. I knew there were some challenges, one of them being the sewer, to, to get that property developed. But for over a year now, we've been trying to negotiate, and part of that negotiation has been, how long's it gonna take? What's, you know, because I was kind of holding back, giving him a signed contract on the property, and at the same time, my reason for doing that was because he didn't have all the utilities in place, and couldn't bring all the utilities in place for us to do that. So we, we thought we had crossed that threshold a few months ago, when, when it became clear that we, A, had this other contractor bringing the sewer line part of the way down the street, and B, we, we had basically permission from the DOT to put the sewer line into their right-of-way. So at that point in time, I signed a, a purchase agreement to buy the property and moving forward on that. As far as the urgency to get this done, I can tell you that Mellow Mushroom has already at one point put the screws to me to, to get this deal closed, because it's just taken, from their point of view, taken extraordinarily long amount of time to get a deal done, from their point of view. And I'm pushing as hard as I can to try to get that deal done, and it's just becoming frustrating, and thus, I can understand how the people at Mellow Mushroom Corporate feel when they look at it from the outside, being frustrated with it as well. So, they've, they've threatened and given me a timeline before to, to perform or else, and, and we were able to hit that milestone, but I can't promise that that's not gonna happen again, and that they canceled my franchise agreement for the Canton Marketplace. So, that's kind of where I'm at. I, I, I just wanted to kind of introduce myself, let you know what I'm doing, and as part of that, I, I did bring some drawings, just to kind of put a little bit more of a face on what I'm trying to do. I am working with an architect, and we're not finished yet because I'm holding up, I'm spending all my money, or I know I actually have a deal.
How long will that last?
Yeah. I'm anticipating that I'm gonna have three salaried employees, probably a dozen full-time, and in addition to that, probably another sixty or seventy part-time employees. Yeah, but when you have the big staff and, although, maybe one shorter, I apologize. I printed ten, I thought I had it covered. But that, those are some, some elevation drawings, and I, sorry, I can't share these with the rest of the room, but those are just some elevation drawings that I've done with, with the architect that shows the restaurant that I'm working on. The last sheet is the floor plan, so you can get an idea of what's going on. And, you know, this is a franchise situation, so they're, they're basically giving me a license to run the business in this market, and I'm paying for the construction of the building, the purchase of the property, and, and everything else to get the place up and running. So, I'm anxious to get this thing going. I was trying to be in the city of Canton, but that fell through for sources out of my control, but, who knows, maybe annexations in the future for the property that I am looking at. But I'm excited to do this, and I'm very anxious to do this, and anything you guys can do to help me would be greatly appreciated.
Thank you. John, go ahead.
I just wondered, you said that they mixed East Street downtown for a site. Did you have any grace, this site that you have on my...
Oh, absolutely, yeah. They, they have a formal process where they'll come out, once you have a, once you have a site that gets through like the first round, they'll, they'll do a, like a telephone round and, and talk about where, where are you talking about, and what are you looking at? So, a couple of the sites that I promoted, like Sixes Road, for example, they didn't want me to do that because it was too close to the restaurant downtown, town center. So, that one got killed just because of proximity to another restaurant. And the Riverstone Parkway sites they looked at and, and just didn't feel like that was the place they, they wanted to be. They wanted more visibility, they wanted to be closer to the highway, and things of that nature. So there's a very formal process, and the only two properties that they've looked at are the North Avenue property and the, what I call the Key Drive property.
You know, they, if they pulled the plug on you for the Canton Market, where, where would they come back? Who would, you know, in franchise, they've come back to the same issue, the same, same site, same problem?
Yeah, I mean, there's nothing to prevent them from signing me or somebody else up to, to go after the Canton Market at some point in the future, but they can certainly pull the plug on me at this point in time, and say, Tom, it doesn't make sense, what's, what's, what's pulling me out, so...
I think they know what they're doing. I was at a Mellow Mushroom, and I've been at the same one many, many times. Every time I've been there, I've waited in line.
I'll try to correct that, I mean...
No, 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 just even for a carryout. I mean, the point is, they're busy.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's a positive thing for you. I mean, it's a few minutes.
Okay.
There's always a problem. They know what they're doing with site selection. So I guess we have to know what we're doing, trying to help you.
This is a, this is a good-sized restaurant. They've really, they, you know, if, if you know anything about the franchise, they started back in the seventies with a couple of Georgia Tech grads, and it was just a little shack on the side of the road down by Georgia Tech, and they've gone through many iterations of, of their standards, and their current level of standard restaurant is, is quite high. I mean, this is a fifty-five-hundred, fifty-two-hundred square foot restaurant that I'm proposing to build, and it's a pretty big one, even to their standards. So, you know, hopefully, we're, we're right sizing it for the, the market that we're gonna be serving, but don't want empty seats, but don't want people waiting in line either, so...
How much time do we have to help you? I mean, I mean, because we got a work session in two weeks, and we're gonna vote, so we're trying to help you, but we don't wanna...
They're, they're breathing down my back, and if they do decide to put a timeline on me, there, there will be some timeline associated with that. In other words, we have X number of days to get this done, or else. So I can't tell you that it's tomorrow, but to me, it feels like tomorrow, you know?
But this is the first time that you've been to the council, and I guess, listening to everybody speak here, that, that you can convey to Mellow Mushroom that there's an awful lot of interest from the city, including the mayor? That this, we probably should have been here sooner, but we can't fix that, but now we're here, we're interested, we want to work with you, and you can, you think you are gonna sell that to the Mellow Mushroom folks? Or if you need, those, sorry, Yellow Jacket fans, are they still, are they still here in town? We'll go down and see them.
Yeah.
I'm dead serious. Yeah, help convince the, convince them that we want their franchise here, and just give us a little time. We'll go down and see them.
When you say give us a little time, I, I know exactly what their response would be to that, that they, you know, it's come September, they're gonna say, it's been two years, Tom, well, which longer do you need?
Well... Tom, this is the first that we've gotten.
I was engaged with Matthew Thomas on this back almost eighteen or twenty months ago, in, in trying to pursue, and granted, that was the North Street property, but, but I was engaged with the city at that point in time in trying to, trying to pursue this, so it's not like, I've never approached the city and haven't been trying to work with the city. I was.
I'm sorry about that, but this is the first time the council...
And I'm not trying to throw Matthew under the bus by any means, because he helped me quite a bit, but I never felt the need to address council.
Right, right.
I did sit in on a couple of council meetings, because Billy Hasty was supposed to be presenting, and I was very interested in what his plans were for the north side of 20 at the time that I was looking to buy that, yeah, other piece of property.
Is Mellow Mushroom still located in Atlanta?
Yes, they are. They still source all of their commissary, their, their sauces and dough is all made in Atlanta and shipped across the country.
But see, if they gave it, they gave it to another franchiser, franchisee, they would have the same problem. They want to, they want to come into Canton, it'd be like changing canoes in the middle of the river.
Yeah.
Mr. Hart, what we're gonna do...
All right, well, we will do that. We will get you an answer expeditiously in the next few short days through being there as to what we can do and what needs to be done and if we can just expedite it. We have to, like I said, I'm not opposed to calling a special call meeting to make that decision if that's the process we need to go through. So we'll do our best and we do want you to be there and be successful.
Okay. Thank you, thank you for your time and your attention.
Thank you, Nicholas.
Okay. Next item is the, we have the consent agenda and I will read each of these and you're welcome to, if you need more information or talk about them further, we'll take them off, just let me know. The second reading and approval of the Historic Preservation Commission ordinance amendment to change the number of members from five to seven and the terms. B) Approval of Historic Preservation Commission member appointments of Sharon Brooks-Hunt, Melma Gruder, Jeff Brown for three years, Susan Byss and Lynn Bliss for two years, Jack Fincher and Stacy Young for one-year terms. Item C: Approval to begin downtown Canton parking enforcement on August 1st, 2015. D) Approval of expenditure of $20,001.72 as City of Canton's 25% of the cost for the contract with Casey Custom Docs for Sher and Cherokee County, City of, that should be, that should be Cobb County, I'm sorry, should be Cobb County, Cobb County Water and Sewer Authority, City of Canton Reservoir Boathouse. Item E: Approval of Atkins North America Inc., $19,850 task order for design services for Etowah River Trail from Heritage Park to Bowling Park. F) Approval of the zoning condition amendment for prominent senior village LP Casey ZCA 1503-001. G) Approval of contract with ARC for master plan update with city responsible for $26,000 of the cost, this is a $104,000 grant. All right, is there any changes or pull any of those off? If not, I'm gonna pay a motion to approve.
Second.
At the second, any other discussion? If not, does the favor signify as a hang high?
High.
Close note, all members voting for the motion, thank you. Item A, under old business here, discussion and action on architect selection for Canton's Northwest Fire Station, Councilman Bill Mann.
Yes, the Fire Services Committee met on May 14th here at City Hall. All the members of the committee were present, myself, Councilman McGree, Councilman Goodwin. Additional attendees included Mayor Oggood, Chief Floyd and Acton City Manager Nathan Ebron. We also met with Gary Watkins and Clifford Daniel with Wally Wilson Architectural Firm to discuss our approach to Northwest Canton Fire Station. In the meeting, Mr. Watkins suggested that he and Chief Floyd meet to discuss the city's needs in detail. I spoke with Chief Floyd earlier today and he and Mr. Watkins have been having several productive conversations and Nash have a meeting scheduled for next week. Chief Floyd's in North Carolina pending the arrival of his grandson, but they are meeting next week, I think on Wednesday. At the end of the meeting of the Fire Services Committee, it was voted unanimously to recommend engaging Wally Wilson for the design of the Northwest Canton Fire Station. So therefore, I move the City of Canton engages Wally Wilson to design Northwest Canton Fire Station with input from Chief Floyd and appropriate city staff members.
Okay. We have a motion, second, any other discussion? If not, does the favor signify as a hang high?
High.
Close note.
No.
All members voted for the motion when the steps were stopped. Next item, discussion and action on proposal for grandfather LED lighting installed prior to LED lighting ordinance adoption on April 16th, 2015. You know that we did adopt an ordinance which would essentially prohibit the LED lights circling the windows of some of the stores and lights that were not being used really for security type purposes or lighting of the area at night, but it's more of a decorative type arrangement there. And yet, we do have, I believe, three locations, maybe four, that have those and I had them but prior to the, or at the time of the implementation of the ordinance. And my suggestion is, is that we grandfather those in and move on from here. While I understand we could technically, you know, have them remove them and pay them for whatever the cost would be, it doesn't really make sense to me to do that, so I suggest that we grandfather those in. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Russ.
Do you have your hand up first, Hooky?
No. I'm examining the board.
Okay. Sorry about this. We'll get... No, I just wondered, we had talked about this and I just wondered if we wanted to create the grandfather condition that is for the existing owner only, because we were talking about if that owner sells, he loses his right to the LED lights.
Is that...
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I think that's the one thing that's missing here and I think there has to be a further spelling out, if the corporation has sold, the individual owning that building, if he sells the corporation, that still includes transfer, it doesn't matter.
You're saying if the title transfers, then they lose that?
Title transfers, they lose the right to the LED lights that take them down. Or reapply for something, whatever, but the bottom line is they no longer, they're not grandfathered in anymore.
Right, okay.
Is that fair?
And once that business moves out, we're done with it.
Well, if he sells the smoke shop or whatever it is that we got, he, the next guy in doesn't get the right to use the lights.
Right.
It's the only way you're gonna stop it.
Okay, is this...
And the only grandfather clause.
Okay, is this the owner of the business or the owner of the property?
We already have an owner of the property that has a problem, that doesn't work, so it's the owner of the, of the business, because if he's renting it to use, put up those lights, if he moves, he's gonna take down those lights. I would hope that the owner in the next lease prohibits that, but if he doesn't, we will prohibit it, that nobody, a new owner, renter, whatever, can't come in and keep the lights.
You can draw us up something on that if that works, okay?
Yeah, well, I mean, it'd be nice to have some objective way to decide and you could say, when the business license changes names, which wouldn't catch the corporate transfer, but I don't know how you're gonna enforce that anyway. How would you know when somebody sold the stock of their corporation and so it's their owner? I think if you just, and I'll think more about it, but what popped in my head was the business license changes into a different person, at that point they would...
There are so few, but we wanted to go away.
Right, there's generally three or four that have that, but, Mr. McGree, you have something?
Yes, I was wondering, when these lights begin to fail, will we allow replacement? Or will we make a provision when they begin to fail that they must remove them and not renew?
I don't know how you do that.
Yeah.
Actually, it'd look worse if you have a hopscotch on off, it'd look better to just have neither on or off. So I would think you gotta allow maintenance, you gotta allow maintenance, that's not right. You agree with that, Bobby, or no?
Well, I mean, you don't want them to replace them if they all go out, so you don't wanna say, yeah, you're allowed to perform maintenance on them, but I'll give it some thought. We're gonna have to change the ordinance anyway, so I'll try to have something up and we'll see where we go.
And I suppose if somebody had a electrical failure and they all blew out, maybe in the event of something like that, they can't put it back in.
In my mind, you'd wanna say you cannot.
Yeah, I think so.
We want, as they go out, disrepair and so we may have to just say, once they're disprepared, they're nuisance and therefore have to come down.
You mean when one bulb goes out or...
That's the problem with life, yeah.
Will it make a percentage of value?
You may be able to say, you know, more than fifty percent or something like that, like you do with non-conforming use structures. Yes.
Okay, bring us something back to the work session and I'm assuming you're asking our enforcement people not to give any citations or anything to those who have them until we get this taken care of.
Somebody replaces a bulb, how will they ever know anyway? I mean, you're not trying to split hairs, you're apparently trying to get rid of them.
The fact is, we don't have the ordinance in place right now. Can we stop somebody from installing?
We, no, we do have that ordinance in place. We have that in place.
All right.
What we don't have is the grandfather clause there, yeah. All right, item C, discussion and action on Canton Marketplace lift station reimbursement agreement, Mr. Eman.
Yes, Mayor, Councilman, the work session agenda, you have a copy of the Second Amendment to reimbursement agreement that modifies and changes an existing agreement we had with Simpler to reimburse some sewer fees to them. This agreement, the amendment, makes the reimbursement fees a little bit more equitable in our opinion, based on usage versus just amount, area of land. We're asking for your consideration to approve.
This is one that is, I don't quite feel comfortable with yet, but I mean, some of you may, I mean, it's, as you know, that the agreement, right or wrong or good or bad, was that that pump station was built, as I understand, by Simpler. And at that time, there was an agreement with the city for reimbursement as individuals tied on and the, those property owners were within a designated area that was, I understand as a map, can they, and somebody may have this, map that went along with it, that this is the area that was to be utilizing that pump station. Now, that's what I understood at the time. Don't necessarily like that, don't know whether it's right or not, but that, it is what it is and that's pretty much what that says, is that, the concern I have, I guess, is are we, are we taking away any possible, are we possibly taking away any vested interest that someone could have that was in that particular area and bought property there while Simpler, Simpler's not involved anymore, as I understand it anyway? Are we stepping on somebody's toes there that has a vested interest when they bought the property? I mean, I don't know the answer to that.
And I'll give you my thoughts when we first came, when this first came up. I was more concerned about when we went to, somebody come and pull in a land disturbance permit for a half acre business and we said, oh, you gotta pay us $300,000, because that's what the agreement said, that whatever this area land owed, it owed when the first land disturbance permit was pulled in that area. And the numbers were huge, they were, far more than a half acre site would do, it would stifle and kill any developer. We don't have an agreement with those property owners, so nobody has any rights. We haven't promised anybody anything, other than to reimburse Simpler for the cost of installing the infrastructure. This is just changing the method of getting the money. That's the way I look at it. But I was concerned about the other problem, which is somebody suing us and saying, you got issued this permit, you need to charge me $200,000, so...
So the property owner that may have bought within that designated area, while we haven't promised them anything, Simpler may have.
I don't think Simpler could have, but they may, they may have agreements we don't know about, but...
Well, now, why would there have been a map attached to that agreement?
I have no idea.
Well, that was my understanding as to the reason that was done, because that was the area that, that they had with, in agreement with the city that where the reimbursements would come from.
But, and it was very large numbers and that if everything had been developed right away, Simpler would have been repaid in a very quick manner. The problem is now, eight, nine, 10 years later, however long it is, it's a different world and those numbers don't work, they're just too large, because it was when the land disturbance permit was pulled. I mean, this came up when the hospital pulled their land disturbance permit and Simpler said, hey, wait a minute, we're supposed to be paid something. Well, it turns out that the hospital's being built on a site that...
Excluded.
That either already paid or it doesn't owe, but the plan was that the hospital's gonna go on some other property and pay a huge amount of money. When I say huge, I mean a couple hundred thousand dollars. So now you've got this other hospital property that's not gonna be a hospital, that's got a number based on it being a hospital. So when somebody comes along and wants to build a little shopping center that has one toilet in every business, but you know, it's just not reasonable. That number is too high.
So let me ask you this, when Verizon or AT&amp;T store ties on, are they having to pay that?
Yes, under the current agreement, no. Under the new agreement, yes.
Under the...
This amendment would make Melo Mushroom and anybody else that's using the sewer pay, which was, it really gets Simpler paid faster, was kind of the idea.
I thought as that developed on the north side, they don't have to pay anything toward that pump station?
If AT&amp;T came in, they had to pay like $300,000. The first person who came and got a permit had to pay, I don't remember the exact number, but it's over a hundred thousand dollars. So you're talking about one little store would have to pay the entire fee for everything north of Highway 20 under the current agreement.
I don't make any sense.
Well, that's what I said.
I can tell you this, while it didn't make sense, while it doesn't make sense now, it made sense to a whole bunch of people that was here begging for that. I don't know why it did, but it did make sense to them.
Well, I don't know, I mean, the agreement is really just between the city and Simpler, so I don't even, really even know who was at the table, other than the part, I mean, the hospital was, everybody thought these things were gonna happen, but it's the north part that really brings it to, highlights the problem with it, which is exactly that. The agreement says there's some dollar number assigned to the north of Highway 20, when the first permit is pulled, pay those that money.
Boy, are they gonna be surprised, aren't they?
Well, it didn't, right, it just didn't seem fair.
So is there a map attached to the revised agreement?
Well, the map, yeah, well, it becomes moot. The map was, you know, this area owes a hundred thousand dollars, this area owes two hundred thousand, whatever.
Is there anything in the revised agreement would keep anyone from tapping into that?
No, no.
Regardless...
And you're gonna have to grapple with the sewer availability in this area. You got bigger issues than just this reimbursement, because you've got people wanting to tap on, we've got a lift station that can only handle so much, it may need to be expanded when it gets to a certain point.
Sure.
I mean, there's lots of decisions you're gonna have to make about availability and all that, but typically, you'd let everybody that could get to it tap in and pay a fee, which is what we're...
And this would allow...
This does.
How much money does Simpler have to get back? You know, the number?
It's in the, it's in the agreement, $963,000.
$900,000, so three...
They'd not been reimbursed anything, other than what they got first.
They've not been reimbursed anything?
There were some paid immediately, but other than that, because nobody's...
So essentially, if they got three three hundreds, it'd almost be paid out, I mean, they want...
That was the plan.
They wanted to get it fast.
That was what the current agreement said.
Would they agree to something different or we don't know?
They do agree to that agreement.
And what does that say relative to if a half acre AT&amp;T comes in, what do they have to pay?
It's based on their usage, someone per gallon. So if somebody comes in that's a heavy water user, they're gonna pay more than somebody that just has a bathroom.
How do we know how much per gallon to pay off that, I mean, what if everything out there develops with one bathroom?
But that's...
I mean, that number hits their money back.
They may not. If I understood, Mr. Tate, you didn't calculate it and it was capacity, I mean, the number of gallons left was divided into the amount of money still owed and that's the per gallon. I mean, the idea is that we will use the capacity of that lift station as it currently sits.
You know, it almost seems like we might wanna talk to somebody who was involved in that at the time too, about, you know, some of the parties that were involved.
But that's, but that's the problem, the parties that were involved are Simpler and the city, that's who's talking. You're talking about these other people may have been involved, may not have been involved, the other property owners, but they weren't parties to the agreement.
Was Hasty part of the agreement, is what I was...
No. The hospital, Hasty and Heygood were not, they did not sign the agreement, they're not a party to the agreement.
Even though their land is on the north side of Twenty?
Which is, what, did they own the north side of Twenty?
Yeah, the gray strata, they did, they did.
I don't know if they owned that at the time, but...
Yeah, they did and that is part of the, well, some of it they owned at the time, some they didn't.
Right.
But that's part of the, was included in that map.
Right. But if you went to them now and said, if you wanna build the AT&amp;T store, you gotta pay a hundred thousand dollars or two hundred thousand dollars, they're not gonna wanna do that. you gotta pay a hundred thousand dollars or two hundred thousand dollars," they're not gonna wanna do that. And they're not bound by it. They, they can say, "I didn't sign that agreement to agree to pay that amount of money." You do what you want, I'm just, that's, that's how we got where we are.
I understand what you're saying, it's, uh, not good to, yeah, how do we get there, how do we get there, and what next?
I don't think anybody that owned any of that property, at this point, is gonna wanna pay what that agreement was called for them to pay. Because the idea was, we were gonna develop it all at once. And then we're gonna, and the land disturbance permits can only fire entire site apartments and whatever. And that's not the way it's gonna be developed. It's gonna be little sites that are coming in separately.
So you think the north side's gonna be that way, on, uh, a lot of the acres there?
Well, I don't know. I, I just...
A lot of acres up there.
Yep.
Anyone else? Okay, tell you what it is. Yeah, they agreed to it. Well, you're just gonna pay that.
Well, one option is to let it pop and see what happens.
And they agreed to it, right?
My understanding is, Simpler has agreed to this. That's why we're presenting it.
Is there any timeline involved that's, that's when they have to be repaid by, or what, what's the liabilities of the city?
Well, no, the, the liability, here's the squeeze we could get in. When somebody comes and asks for land disturbance permit, and we say, "Oh, you, under the current agreement, you owe this much money," and they balk and pay it, what happens? They either don't get their permit, and, and they don't like it, because they say, "I never signed that agreement. I'm not paying that." Or we say, "Well, okay, we've done the best we could, Simpler," and then Simpler sues us, and says, "Well, you agreed to collect this." So we're kinda caught. And we don't know what's gonna happen until, because nobody's actually come, except for Northside. To pull apartments in these areas.
Does this...
Now, what about AT&amp;T, those things north, the government can't... I mean, we gonna let them tap on without paying any fee? And not have the ability to charge them a fee, because they're not gonna come to us for a permit?
Four hundred and four thousand.
Four hundred and four thousand per north?
For Northside.
And so we gonna charge them that if they're not even coming to us for a permit? I just think it's unworkable, the way it is, but...
I understand what you were saying about, you mean, like, AT&amp;T, what...
That, that's not in the city right now.
It's not in the city, I mean, that's gonna do utilities, though.
No, but, but, but the agreement says, when we pull, that we charge this, we're gonna come get a land disturbance permit. They're not even gonna come get it from us. So then, all they're gonna come to us and say is, "We'd like to tap onto your sewer," and we're gonna say, "Pay us four hundred and four thousand dollars." That ain't gonna work. I mean... I don't even, I don't know if we could do that at that point. That's my problem. We're in a world that nobody knows what will happen, because it was an unrealistic plan that they designed at the time.
They're gonna say, "I was supporting the..."
And I wasn't a party to it, you can't charge me four hundred and four thousand dollars, and I'm gonna sue you to make you let me in, get in the sewer, so... Whether they win that or not, we're not...
Yeah, we have to accept that, yeah.
Yeah. Mill mushroom, I mean, they're successful in running this line. And we didn't do this revised, they'd be kinda subject to the same fees.
I think they're actually outside the map. That property's actually outside the map.
They're outside the map.
They're not even part of the plan. So then, what do you do about them? They're outside. This, this actually, the amendment would capture them, and make them pay if they're using the lift station. But there's, but right now, who knows what we would do?
Yeah, but if we capture them, at least we're gonna charge them a reasonable.
All right, let me, let me say, I know...
Right, is that correct?
This agreement would charge them what they would expect to pay anywhere that they would live in sewer. But they're charged based on gallons.
Yeah, right now, they're outside of it, but if they were inside of it, it would be an unreasonable fee.
They would be paying the four hundred and four thousand dollars if they were in the plan.
Okay, we just trying to right a wrong here from a long time ago? It, it might've made sense, but it doesn't make sense anymore.
Well, there's two goals. One is actually get Simpler reimbursed. Because, because I don't, the way it was, I don't know if they would ever get reimbursed, because that's the way it's gonna work. And the other is to bring some order to it, because that plan was gonna cause so many questions. Could we charge the full amount to the first person who came and asked for a land disturbance permit, even if they were only a half acre of thirty acres or forty acres? There were gonna be a multitude of issues.
Are we agreeing at this point to pay them nine hundred and some thousand dollars?
Only with, only as we collect the fees.
Oh, I see. It'd just take a long time.
Collect the fees this way.
Correct.
So, pay for itself, this is gonna take time.
Nathan, do you, do you want us to do this, too? I mean, you agree?
Yes, I agree, I agree with pretty much everything he said. I mean, if, if we don't do this, then are we gonna receive any reimbursement? Because there are gonna be businesses, like Mill mushroom, or AT&amp;T, that can't pay four hundred and four thousand dollars, so they should move elsewhere, though.
Sandy has a question, but I was gonna make a motion, but if Sandy has a...
Mill mushroom wouldn't have to do that either, because they're outside the, outside of that map that was originally in the agreement. Go ahead.
I think we danced around this long enough. I make a motion that we, uh, agreed to this reimbursement agreement.
Okay, I have a second. I have a second. Any other discussion? If not, those who favor signature, five, say aye.
Aye.
No, all members voted for the motion. Okay. Let's see, what we got here. All right, item D, wooded mountain trail, I believe. We're gonna have Dave talk about that.
Mr. Otavio? As previously instructed, we were, we were tasked with, um, getting a proposal to do a study on wooded mountain trail, and we've done that. The study, a proposal to do the study was sixteen thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars. However, during the course of discussions with the engineer and, and possible solutions, I don't wanna call them short term, but the initial solutions to the problem, we formulated a plan that we feel is probably the, the solution they would've come up with in their study. And therefore, we asked them to give us a proposal to do, go right into the design of the, of the plan. And I had that as well. And that was thirty-five thousand dollars. If you go with the study, you still have to pay the design anyway. So, what we feel is, is in the best interest to, to move this thing forward at the reasonable cost is to, or go to the study and move right into that designer. They've also estimated that the construction costs for this plant to be, uh, around a hundred thousand dollars. And soup to nuts, the designing and construction will be five months.
Five hundred, you said?
No, to do the, to, to construct, to do the whole project, it will take about five months.
Oh, I see, okay.
Uh, construction cost would be about a hundred thousand.
So, one thirty-five.
And design is thirty-five.
What is involved? What, could, we can land curbs in?
We're gonna put straight back curb and gutter on the, I don't know which side it is, but the side where the homes are. Put those in, put a drop inlet over the existing storm line. So when all that flow is channelized in the road, there's a place to go. On the side where that ditch should've been installed in the first place, we'll put the ditch in, probably put a head wall in over the existing outlet, and move on.
Restart.
At this time, I don't think we have to. There's still a little bit of cross pitch on there, but, um, unless the road is in really, really bad shape, I don't, this, this cost, I believe, does not include any resurfaces.
So, manhole covers are still gonna set up? How far there's some?
We've set one drop inlet on the side of the road. And then put it over the, the storm drain that goes across the road and out into the, um, drainage.
Do you think, do you think that, uh, it's a pass upon them not to have the, not having the resurface?
Does this have a final topic on it? I can't remember if it did or not.
I believe it does. Yeah, now it does.
It does have a final topic on it, okay.
Yeah.
I think it'll need resurfaced at the time, personally. I think probably I'll go head while, while...
Well, this, yeah, this, this is only a short portion of the road.
It's not the whole road.
It's not the whole road. It goes from about where the, starts to turn the corner down to the low point.
But if we're gonna repair the edges of the road where it's been broken up, I know we patched in certain places.
Yeah, we, a, a lot of that, when we, you know, take care of the field and what they probably get into the design, but, um, the crux of it is, is curb and gutter, a little bit of landscaping and, and things like that. Put the ditch in the way it's supposed to be, should've been put in, and probably put a head wall in. And it should address, um, the majority of all these drainage issues.
What about, there's some that have said to me that they think there's so much coming down from the backyard from the top of the hill, coming through the backyard. We still don't really know how much that is, and if that's gonna, are they gonna come back? I know that's not, should not be our problem.
Well, again, that ditch should take care of an awful lot of that.
No, no, not about the backyards. Backyards of the houses.
Oh, oh, oh. It will, it will alleviate an awful lot of the surface runoff that's going into the backyards. There'll still be some, but, um, not like it is now.
And, any, any questions? Do I, is, is anyone that wants to move forward with at least the, getting the, the, uh, the design on that?
Mr. Mayor, I've got a question. Would that be fitting under stormwater? Would that come out of stormwater?
Yeah.
I'm not sure how that would.
No, that's what I was gonna say. We talked about that, our stormwater, I mean, yeah, uh, earlier this week. We kinda thought maybe the curb would, but not necessarily with the ditch, and so it might be a fifty-fifty split. I mean, you can't, you can't hang stormwater on, um, say, a design that wasn't implemented. Okay? I don't think so.
Sure.
Nick?
Mayor, Council, we're going to be coming back to y'all in June, putting on the work session agenda for, for consideration of this. Consideration of, uh, uh, either approving the seventeen thousand dollar original plan, and that is for having the engineer come present us with different options, or to move forward with this, uh, suggestion that we take that money and better utilize it, go ahead and design what Mr. Otavio here has been suggesting. So, that will be on June agenda, if that's okay.
Oh, okay, so we don't need any motion there, then? Okay. Thank you, David. Under new business, a discussion of the filming agreement, uh, actually, that should just, for the city council, for two twenty-one West Main Street. Uh, you have in your agenda package the agreement for the utilization of the O'Connor, Cat, Texel Mill offices there for the filming of the founder, a portion of the founder there. And if you notice, the number of days, there's a potential for eleven days of utilization of that site. And they have, like, uh, they say, basically, they estimate to require about seven days of occupancy over a period of eleven days, including four days of prep, one day of shoot, and two days of raft. Uh, they also may come back in, and, and if they need to, within a year, and reshoot some of it. Okay, so that's great. Under, under this agreement, they would pay the city twenty-five hundred dollars. They are, the shooting, uh, the, the other agreement you see there for the theater, they're paying them twenty-five hundred dollars per day. But, uh...
Sure they didn't need per day?
Well, we checked on that. No, they did not, unfortunately.
Why would they do it on one and not the other?
Beats me. I think they did it on the theater, because they don't anticipate it's gonna take but one day of shooting. And, and a lady we talked to yesterday said, they're really only gonna be shooting one day at the, uh, Texel Mill office. But...
They're using it for more than one day.
Using it for more than a day. Now, they will be having, utilizing some off-duty, uh, policemen that they will, will be paying for separately, unless we'll be included in that. They will be closing, uh, as far as the theater goes, they will be closing, uh, uh, East Main Street for a short period of time on June the fourth, the night of June the fourth, starting around seven o'clock. They don't anticipate, as of yesterday, closing any streets for the utilization of the Texel Mill offices, I understood. So, but anyway, I mean, it's, it's kinda exciting in a way, you know, you think about it, and that, uh, you know, they've, they've looked at some of our facilities, and we do have some that fit the nineteen fifties very well, you know? What they were looking for, for that particular film. But, um... You know? We'll see how this one goes, and if it goes well, we'll be looking forward to more. And I hope, I hope that our merchants particularly will not be adversely impacted. I think this possibility could be positive for them, but it's also could, could be, you know, a negative in some cases, that some people may have to be inconvenienced for a short period of time, and, and we hope that will be at a very minimal, so... Anyway, do I, we need to, first, go ahead and, and, and deal with this one, so do I have a motion that we, uh, court didn't assign that agreement?
Come on.
That motion's second. Any other discussion? Not, those who favor signature, five, say aye.
Aye.
No, all members voted for the motion.
What is Valfran getting paid for there?
I don't know, uh, I don't know what they're, I have no idea. Well, that's probably more than I never might have said. Okay, let's go to the, uh, next, uh, discussion, uh, River Green Streets, Councilor Russ?
Uh, yeah, you know, I've lived in River, River Green for eleven years, and, uh, we still got one point eight miles of streets that are not top coated, and, uh, developers come and go. Ours is sorta there, sorta not there, mostly. But the bottom line is, we got an issue, and I think, I think there's been, some of the bonds have been pursued. I think there's one particular, about three-quarter of a mile street that really is a big problem. It looks like the bonds were supposed to be there, they were not there, they were not renewed. Not sure whose fault that was, but the bottom line is, we have streets that are unfinished. So, I'm wondering where we are as a city with going after those bonds, and if we can't collect those bonds, what action we need to take to get them finished? You, you know what that is?
I know, but I'll, I'll get a response to you.
Okay. Do you have any contact with whoever identifies himself as the developer? We're still trying to find him.
Yes, yes, we...
Somebody has identified themselves as Chad and Will.
No, not as Chad and Will, but we've had, we've had conversations with a few of the developers, and we'll be right to cover them a little subsequent.
They're, we don't know they're there.
No.
Does, they've never been, identified themselves as designees of that developer?
No.
Why are we even talking to them?
Well, no, they're, they're, there was a proposed agreement to get some of the roads finished, and then you have sewer, tap, pay reimbursement issues. And there was a representation that there was a, they were a designee. They, they took a sign that, of some of the rights of the developer, but not the obligations.
But, but the paperwork seems to be missing, sort of.
We've never seen an assignment, that's true.
So what do we do? We, are we working on, are we waiting for them to come to us, or are we going to them, or what's happening?
Well, they're, we, we filed a claim on the bonds, that's already in the, so that's in, in motion.
Okay.
That's not, um, I'm not real optimistic about the bonds.
Those remain that's filed.
They're being disfiled.
Yeah. You're not optimistic about those?
We'll get something, but we won't get the full amount.
So we have to wait for at least the resolution of that before we can do anything, is that...
Well, there's, there's nobody proposing to pay the streets, other than this one proposal that's never made it to council.
Well, there's, there's nobody proposing to pay the streets, other than this one proposal that's never made it to council.
Was the one proposal having to do also with the sewer tap fees? No.
Originally, it was just about pegging the streets so that we would release the bonds. They were gonna pay certain of the streets, not all of them, and then we were gonna release the bonds. That agreement never made it to the city council for consideration, and then the sewer thing came up, that's a separate issue.
And right now, we're holding sewer, sewer credits, sewer type credits until resolution.
Isn't the paper trail on the sewer credits difficult to trace?
It is, yes, sir.
That was the question I was gonna ask, is that the one that Mr. Cummings was working on where he wrote a letter saying we're not gonna issue any more credits?
That's correct.
So, how long, what's the prognosis on that?
From the city's point of view, we're done. We're not, we're not recognizing credits, and the roads are just like every other stuff.
Yeah, permits, permits are being, tap, tap fees are being paid, and they're not getting the credit for it.
That's correct, yes, they're paying the full amount, full tap fee, in hopes that this will instigate discussion, further discussion, that may involve addressing some of the roads issues as well as the sewer tabs.
But we're still kinda waiting for the next move.
Right.
Regarding the streets, I've mentioned this before, I think we need an overall transportation improvement plan. We need it over the whole city, we need to know what needs to be done, and some sort of schedule for doing it, and some, we need to determine how we're gonna fund it, but we're gonna have to do these streets, I mean, they're gonna have to be done.
Yeah.
We keep putting this off, putting it off, but it is likely to be done.
I think, yeah, it's been up here before, and I think there's eighteen miles of streets, it's a big issue, it's a lot of money.
Eighteen miles in where? You're talking about the ones that need topping on the?
Yes, unfinished, there's some that are worse condition than others.
Study we had done a year ago.
Yeah. I think, is that right, Nathan, is that about right, eighteen miles, something like that?
Uh, I'm not sure, I haven't get that number.
I think we're gonna have to incorporate those in with the overall thing and do some of them along as we keep maintaining these streets as, that we try to maintain anyway, some of that.
I like your thinking, Gene, except for one thing, is that if you create a fund, all of a sudden, there's gonna be tremendous reluctance on the part of some of these developers. Developers are gonna back away because they know you got the money sitting there and waiting to do it. So I think it's, it's not a chicken and an egg thing, but you, creating, we went out and had a bond issue for eighteen miles of streets. We've almost, almost told them we're not gonna come after them for the money, right?
I'm not telling them about the bond issue, I'm hopefully, hopefully not doing that, but.
Where are you gonna get the money?
Well, that's, that's what I said, we need to determine that, you know, it, it may be that we, we don't have to do it all at one time, you know, that's, that we need to know how much we need over every year.
Why don't we, why don't we have it as a work session agenda item for the next meeting, and we'll try to figure out the direction, can we do that?
Well, we can start, we can start there.
Yeah.
I think that'd be a place to start, sure, just to make sure that's on the.
How big is the problem, and how are the ways to address it, and just figure out how to go? It's gotta be done, it's a question of who pays for it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, City Manager report, you have something else?
Sign of Mill Mushroom.
Mr. Huffman, I believe you wanted to mention something about, make an announcement about cleanup.
Yes, I do. As you know, this, past few months, we've been working on blighted properties, and we're gonna continue to work on blighted properties, but we're gonna take another, another step forward, and thanks to Camille, she's put together with Waste Management Cleanup Canton, which is gonna start, oh, it's already started, with a free app, and I'm not sure everybody knows about that, I'm sure most of the citizens do not. It's called See, Click, Fix, and it's at the App Store, and it's free. You go on there, and you see something needs to be worked on, blighted, a bunch of trash in the front yard of, of an area, but something that you just think needs to be addressed. Now that we have code enforcements, and we got the codes to, to support it, you can do, do that click, fix, and, See, Click, and Fix, and it'll be addressed. And to go along with it, we're gonna put on June sixth, additional dumpsters here at the city hall, and then the one out on Ridge Road, we're not gonna charge for citizens of Canton to go in there and use free, so people who have, excuse me, trash, things that they just don't know how to discard, we wanna give them an easy way to discard some of this materials or stuff that just, they just don't know how to get rid of it. So, I just hope that we all can get behind the Let's Clean Up Canton and keep the ball rolling, let's not let up. Our police department has done some work, we've got some houses torn down, I think it's between the city and the county, we've torn down about nine, nine or ten houses, and a few more are working on to get that done too. So if you see a house that you know that's vacant, you take a picture of it, give us the, the address, so we can find out if it's city or county. And the county has worked very good with us, and turned over to Mr. Cooper, and he usually has his marshals go out and citations, and they get it done pretty quick. So, we're moving forward, Cleanup Canton, June sixth, pick up, get your free app, See, Click, and Fix, and also good for potholes and just anything that needs to be addressed by the city. Thanks, please.
Thank you.
Gene, Gene?
Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I have a question, it looks like we have a, a meeting, work session on the fourth, two days before the sixth. Could we have an agenda item to just go over the roll-off site, this kind of football, in terms of the costs, charges, and so forth?
Sure.
Just an update on that, because I've always thought there should be a small dump available, an opportunity for somebody to dump a part of a car or whatever truck load or crap, rather be charged for, and I just wanna go over, what are the terms, what are the costs, how is that operating? Just kind of an update, and see if there's a better way to make it more usable. It's not as prevalent now, but I, I had personally driven down abandoned cul-de-sacs of junk, so just a whole, somebody dumped a pickup truck there, it sat for six months, we probably paid three hundred dollars to have it taken away as a community, but it's a lot cheaper, I think, to give people, people that were desperate, hopefully the economy's gotten a little better, it's not as bad, but I'd really like to have that safety valve there for people that truly can't afford thirty-five dollars or whatever we charge, and that's why I wanna just have an update about where we are. And what's it called, and, oh, Gene, I know you're always back on this side of it, is that we can't just look at it as a profit-making thing, or just, if it does cost the city, we gotta look at a benefit to the population, not just say it's gotta break even, it's, that doesn't make sense.
That was my point, it's a good point.
Yeah.
Back when we were trying to make that pay for itself, and that results is, it's gonna get dumped somewhere if we make it a reasonable cost, or it could possibly go over there, otherwise, it's going in on the side of the rig.
Somebody, and, and you're gonna have to clean it up, it's gonna cost you a lot more to clean it up.
Well, I agree, I totally agree, we talked, we've batted this thing around for years, you know, back and forth, and that. But I think that we need to, you know, look at not only the, we need to look at the cost to city residents, but you know, we allow non-city residents to dump there, and that's been something that's kinda puzzled me for a long time. I really, I really don't like that idea of having outside city garbage coming in there.
No, I agree.
And, you know.
But you can check some of that by, you can control it somewhat by asking for a driver's license.
Sure.
But we need to, we need to kinda look at that. I visited the site, I talked to the guy that used to run it, I think it's part-time now also, it's not a full-time thing.
I'll provide a summary that includes costs, revenues, items allowed, who's allowed, hours of operation on there.
And maybe suggestions from the guy who's running it, now, I assume it's a man, but as to how we could do better, if he's, we're missing something here.
I would have to say Waste Management is doing this, they, they don't charge us bringing these dumpsters in here, and that is just one of the benefits of doing business with a first-class.
That's, that's for the June sixth.
June sixth, but they do that, they just did it recently for computer, TVs, and things like that.
Was it hard to get it up?
Yeah, and they had it back here in the back, so, we just got a great working relationship there, anxious to, to continue.
The one that nobody's got a solution for is the old big screen TVs, you just can't get it.
Yeah, you could bring that a couple weeks ago.
You couldn't?
Yes.
You pay though, you have to pay the.
Yeah.
Take them off, but.
It's really hard to get.
Computers and stuff like that.
I think it's like six dollars or something like that.
Okay.
But I think that's a good idea.
That's a good idea.
This is a good one-day solution, there's no question, but I'd like to see a permanent solution that's, that's good for the city.
Okay. The only couple items I have is, we're gonna have, I am gonna intend to call a special meeting on June first, which is a Monday, I think, to consider the finalist for City Manager. Second item is that we need to decide when and how, we need, we need a dry run in our new council chambers. I don't know if any of you have been in there, you should go in there, there's, there's been a lot of work, a lot of insulation to the walls and so forth, and it looks good. I mean, I don't know, I don't know if we're gonna know how it's gonna work until we get in there, and maybe even, you know, maybe our special call meeting on June first could be in there so that we could, you know, test it out, cause probably there'll be a lot, a lot of people at that meeting, but, you know, we should know if there's a bad echo, or if it's hard to hear, or something like that, so. But we do need, we need to get in there, and they have done a lot of work, so, you know, if the, I can tell you, if, if this doesn't work, then it's, it's the PA system, you know, it's, that's, that's a problem, but there's, there's plenty of padding going on those walls, I can tell you right now. Mr. Russ, go ahead.
Gene, June first, is that the end of the two-week period for?
Actually, it ends a little bit before that, just a little bit, but there's a weekend.
We could take action on that night?
Yes.
We will have a proposal to do that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have that worked out by then, hopefully. I mean, if we don't, we won't have a meeting.
We gotta call me June first, Monday.
Yeah.
Okay, now, six o'clock. The, we do need to adjourn to executive session to discuss possible litigation. Yeah, we'll be very brief, and we will not be coming back out. Go it's a favor, aye? Thank you.